Oh my gosh, the whole Nelson clan is here. Not yet. All right, good evening. I would like to call this meeting of Temecula City Council to order. And thank you very much to the Temecula Valley Conservatory of the Arts Summer Chamber Musicians. That was phenomenal. And we have Joshua and Samuel Bondock, we have Joseph Campbell, and we have Marcus Cotton. That was very, very, very good. So, thank you again, gentlemen. All right. Moving on. If we could have this evening for our invocation, we have Carrie Lewis of Bahai of Temecula. So, please come down. And then that will be followed by the flag salute by Mr. James Stu Stewart, council member. So, would you please stand?
Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees. And render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestow.
Thank you.
Okay, please join me in honoring the flag of our great nation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comitero.
Here.
Councilmember Nigar.
Good evening.
Councilmember Ron.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Gentlemen, with your consensus, I would like to move up the consent calendar to this point in the agenda. Councilmember Nigar's not feeling very well, so if we could do that, and then, I mean, he's going to be leaving us this evening. So, with your consensus, do we have any public comments before the consent calendar?
We do not have any public comments on the consent calendar.
All right. So, moving on. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of July 11th, 2017. Number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, approve the license agreement for police substation and Fourth Amendment to amended and restated agreement for partial funding of police services at the Promenade Mall, but with Forest City Commercial Management, Inc. Number five, adopt resolution to establish the amount of the voter-approved Measure C annual special tax levy for fiscal year 2017-18. Number six, adopt ordinance 17-03 to approve the amendment to the Calpers contract to provide for sharing employer costs by classic local miscellaneous members in the management and confidential employees group, second reading. Number seven, adopt ordinance 17-04 amending the Temecula Municipal Code, providing for the election of city council members by district, establishing district boundaries, identifying district numbers, and establishing the election order of each district. This is the second reading. Number eight, receive report regarding status of upcoming vacancies on boards and commissions. Number nine, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Michael Baker International, Inc. for Temecula Park and Ride, PW 06-09. Number 10, award a contract to Best Contracting Services, Inc. for the Temecula Children's Museum Roof Rehabilitation, PW 16-02. 11, approve a three-year agreement for Contractor Services with Counts Unlimited, Inc. for citywide traffic count data collection for fiscal years 2017-20. Number 12, approve an agreement for the installation and maintenance of electrical and telecommunications lines in public right-of-way on Pachanga Parkway between the City of Temecula and the Pachanga Band of Luusenyo Indians. Okay?
Move consent.
Motion and a second.
I'd like to pull item number seven.
Okay.
And I'll be abstaining from item number 12.
And that's because councilmembers Ron's wife works for the tribal government.
Okay, so as noted, so let's go ahead and vote on the balance with an abstention recorded, so. A motion and a second. All right, go ahead and cast your votes. And we show five unanimous with extensions as noted, and pulling item number seven. So, could we have a staff report on number seven?
With respect to the staff report, this is a second reading of the ordinance that was introduced at the last city council meeting. It is the ordinance that will be establishing council districts for the City of Temecula with the yellow map that was published in the newspaper accordingly, based on the 3-2 council vote from the last city council meeting. Unless staff has, or unless council has specific questions, that would conclude staff's report.
Okay, so there are any specific questions? And if not, then we are ready for council comments. So, Matt?
Well, I just wanted to reaffirm that I'll be voting no on this item because of, I think, the analysis and motivations used in selection of the yellow map, not necessarily in concurrence with that, and so I'll be sort of stirring my same vote as the last time.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm pretty much echoing just what Matt said, too.
Okay. As noted, all right then, in that case.
Move item seven.
Move item seven, and I need a second. So, I have a motion and a second on item seven. And casting votes. And we have five yeas and two nos, as indicated. Okay. So, that takes care of the consent calendar. Thank you, Councilmember Nigar. We hope you feel better. Okay, so we're going to move back to presentations and proclamations. And the first is we have presentation of award from the American Cancer Society, Inc. to the City of Temecula for sponsoring the Relay for Life event. So, this is Joan?
Joanne.
Joanne Pankid, who is Community Development Manager for the American Cancer Society. Welcome.
Yes ma'am, thank you. And thank you, Mayor, and the entire council. You were a presenting sponsor this year for our event, and I wanted to give you a tiny report on the success of the event. Our goal for this year was 28,000. Our actual for the event was 53,976.
A little better.
Just a tad. We actually reached our goal before the event actually happened and set a brand-new goal, so we nearly doubled the goal. We had some goals for teams as well, which we exceeded, and our people, we exceeded by almost 100 people. So, it was a tremendously successful event. We had a brand-new leadership team that did a great job, and we welcomed several new sponsors, as well as the city. So, thank you to everyone, and we have our presenting sponsor award for you.
Thank you. So, Mayor Protem, would you like to go down and accept the award on behalf of the City of Temecula? And it is our privilege and honor to sponsor this event. There's not a person in this room who hasn't been touched by cancer in some way. So, we really thank you for allowing us to participate and help you fight to find a cure.
And we thank you so much. Your success, or our success, means more rights to treatment, more access, more classes, support, all kinds of different things, wigs, and pretty much anything you can think of in connection to cancer, including research. So, the more successful we are, the more we can do. Thanks so much.
So, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you so much, and we will definitely find a place of honor in City Hall for this to hang. Appreciate it so much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Got to keep the box.
Oh wait, there's more.
Is it jewelry?
It's a plaque. It's great. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. So, next, we feel like it's Old Home Week. We have presentation of proclamation for National Hospitality House Week, and the 10th anniversary, I can't believe it, 10th anniversary of Jacob's House. And I see the whole, you know, Nelson family is here, the extended family, and I see board members from Jacob's House here. So, I have a list, so who's going to come down? Is everybody coming down? Come on down. Mr. Shawn Nelson and board members, come on. So, we have Shawn Nelson, who you know is our former city manager and founder, and Stephanie, beautiful wife Stephanie, and Jennifer's here. I saw Jen come in, hey. Linda Mahi is here. Stacy Kraus, Christine Beatty, and Dr. Lawrence Bogwin, Temecula's doctor. Thank you all, and thank you for all that you have done. I cannot believe it's been 10 years. So, let me just give you a quick whereas. City of Temecula proclamation, whereas Jacob's House has been a member of the National Healthcare Hospitality Network since 2007, and whereas hundreds of families travel through our community each year seeking medical care for their loved ones, and whereas these families need the comfort and support of others who understand the emotional and financial stress of coping with a traumatic medical crisis, whereas being far from home during a medical crisis compounds the stress for both the patient and their families, and whereas the support provided by the community makes it possible to provide comfort and care to families and patients, whereas our partnership with Temecula Valley Hospital ensures families are made aware of and can receive the services offered by Jacob's House, and whereas Jacob's House joins with the Healthcare Hospitality Network and all member houses across North America in recognizing the importance of compassionate lodging for families in need and the opportunity to show them support, comfort, and friendship, and whereas we congratulate Jacob's House on their 10th anniversary and thank them for the service that they provide to our community. And so, this is presented to you on behalf of the entire city council. We encourage all citizens to celebrate this national event that benefits the health and welfare of our community and our guest families. So, we sincerely appreciate all that you have done. It was wonderful to be a small part of Jacob's House and watching it be, go from a dream to a completely successful reality on behalf of the families that you help and support in a time that they need it most. So, thank you for allowing the city to present you with this proclamation today, and you're going to be busy. So, who would like to speak while Mayor Protem's coming down?
Well, I'll go ahead and start, say a few words. Mayor, members of the council, and staff with the City of Temecula, we're very honored and appreciative of this recognition. It is hard to believe that it's been 10 years. It's been a long, difficult 10 years with many low times, difficult times, but we had a vision of wanting to help families in crisis, and it took us six years for that vision to come to fruition when we closed escrow on our house in December of 2012, 4,000 square feet on two and a half acres on Jedidiah Smith and Margarita. And we opened Jacob's House in October of 2013, the same time that the new Temecula Valley Hospital opened up. And since that time, in three and a half years, we've helped over 415 families from 29 states and seven countries in the last three and a half years.
Amazing.
We have wonderful board members, amazing executive director, amazing volunteers, and so much love and emotion that went into this house. And our goal is to continue to be there for families. We have a saying, "We can't change the destiny, but we can impact the journey for those families." And we've had some pretty tragic stories at the house, and we've had some beautiful ones. But our goal is to always be there for the families, and it's the thing that drives us. It's our mission and purpose, and it's our gift to our son, to have his name live on in a way that can reach out to help other people. So, we're grateful to all of you for your support. Thank you for supporting Jacob's House, and we're going to continue to help families for many years to come. Thank you very much.
This year's theme is "Community with Pride," and we're so proud of all that you have done and the services that you're providing, because Temecula, as we know, is a very generous and giving community. And everything that Jacob's House is doing personifies that community pride. So, Mayor Protem, Ron?
Just wanted to thank you again for all of the hard work and service you give to our region, Shawn, Linda. It's just, it's been wonderful to have you all here. I have to say, on a personal note, I was honored to attend the golf tournament fundraiser earlier this year. I was also honored to win the worst golfer.
I was going to say, how did you do?
I'll admit it. I'll admit it. It's okay. It's on the record now. But it was a wonderful event, and, you know, you know, anything we can do to support your causes is absolutely important to us.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we have a presentation by Matrix Consulting Group regarding law enforcement, the Law Enforcement Joint Powers Authority study. So, could we have Matrix Consulting, please?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to, it's my privilege to introduce to the podium the principal for Matrix Consulting, Mr. Richard Brady, who has a PowerPoint presentation to present to the city council this evening. So, Mr. Brady.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having me here tonight. I am Richard Brady. I'm the president of Matrix Consulting Group, and I was the project manager on this assignment. With me is Ian Brady, who was the principal analyst on this project.
No relation, right?
Quite. There were a couple of other people involved in the project as well. But we've got the key people here for you tonight. So, we were asked about a year ago by nine cities, Temecula included, which currently contract with the Riverside County Sheriff's Office to develop a feasibility assessment of a different kind of, a different approach of providing law enforcement services to these contract cities. One completely outside of the contract, one looking at the feasibility of establishing a joint powers authority among the nine cities to provide police services instead of the sheriff's office. So, the goal was to look at the organizational feasibility, how it would operate, how cost-effective it would be compared to current operations and services provided by the sheriff's department, and how it would be governed. So, that was our scope of work. This is a 300-page project. We're going to walk you only through the high points here. But to get there, it was a very comprehensive approach that we conducted. It was very fact-based, as you can see from the report. There's at least as many numbers in there as there are words. So, we've shown you, I think analytically, that the results that we're going to present to you tonight on the feasibility of this idea are based on good assumptions and analysis of the workloads and service level expectations of Temecula and the other eight cities within the joint service area. So, how we did it, though, starting about a year ago, was extensively meeting, first of all, with each of the city managers to understand service level expectations, some of the evolutionary environment relating to costs and services that generated the study in the first place. And we did that with all nine cities. From that point, we met extensively with the sheriff's department, both your local sheriff's office people, as well as people in the central sheriff's department operations to get costs, to get workload data, to understand how programs work, to how services were organized, how the contract worked, et cetera. A lot of data collection went into this. We summarized all the information we got from interviews and from the data that we collected in a comprehensive descriptive profile of the services that are provided to each one of the cities. That was reviewed with the sheriff's department. So, we had buy-in from the sheriff's department that the factual basis that we used to analyze the feasibility of this idea was sound, and that was an important part of this. But then we also had to analyze assumptions, which we'll get into a little bit, about how this JPA law enforcement operation would be organized and staffed, and what it would cost. An important starting point with that is that we wanted to target at least existing service levels, at least existing service delivery practices. We worked with the city managers' group individually and collectively to make sure that we did that. And we met with them throughout the process. We met with the city managers' group to go through facts, to issues, to assumptions, and the preliminary JPA feasibility analysis. So, it was reviewed pretty extensively. Some of the high-level assumptions, and I'll let Ian get into some of the more detailed assumptions relating to the study, the nine cities, Coachella, Arupa Valley, Lake Elsinore, Menifee, Moreno Valley, Paris, Santa Sinta, Wildamar, and of course, Temecula. So, all nine of those cities were included. No services provided by the sheriff's department are assumed to continue, with the exception of the jail and other county-wide kinds of services like aviation and the kind of specialized services that most cities don't have on their own and that they provide to incorporated cities, as well as to the unincorporated area. For both costs and staffing, we have assumed a 2021 start date, four years from now. And the costs, as we'll describe in a little bit, are in constant dollars, so they're in today's dollars, so we're not trying to assume an inflation rate or anything like that. But we're building into the analysis the staffing that is projected to occur between now and then, based on population and other kinds of changes that are projected to occur. And we based our estimate of workload and service needs based on that. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ian, and he can talk a little bit more about some of the more detailed assumptions.
So, one of the first things that we needed to figure out was how would the JPA actually be governed? And to do that, we looked at a number of different governance models with the different JPAs. We looked at the March Air Force Base. We looked at regional 911 agencies. And what we came up with was a kind of hybrid governance structure that would allow for equal representation, but also for local control to be maximized. And so, the model that we came up with in coordination with the city managers' group was two boards, one Executive Board, meeting quarterly, approving budgets, labor agreements, things like that. The other being more of a technical advisory committee, meeting monthly. And both of these would actually operate on, operate with open-door sessions, as per law. So, having figured out the basis of the governance of the JPA, the next question was looking at how would this actually be organized? Because we have nine cities. They're not all contiguous. Some of them are very far away. And so, it immediately became important to see it really as three pieces, that you would have some services that are local, some services that are regionalized, and some services that are centralized. And so, for the regionalized services, geographically, we divided up the area into three sections, one of which just being Coachella off on its own, given its geography. The rest, more close together. Temecula, obviously, is a little bit further apart, but still close enough, so that some of the services that would be regional would still be feasible under that approach. And so, the centralized, regional, and local theme really kind of mirrors how we organized the potential JPA agency. And here we can see what the structure looked like. The three major divisions, one would be support services, and these are all the centralized services, admin, HR, finance, 911, things that you don't necessarily have to be in the same city, but nonetheless would be part of one agency's functioning, one agency's support. Regional services, things like K-9, traffic, detectives. And then local services, this would be the local chief, this would be patrol, crime prevention, more proactive kinds of functions. And so, that way, the organization structure is reflecting how the service is organized and also how it's costed. So, we looked at a number of different models for how costs can be allocated. We looked at Riverside Sheriff's Offices, Sheriff's Departments model. We looked at a number of other contract models. And in doing so, our goal was to find one that achieves cost transparency, cost transparency, first of all, so that it was clear why costs were what they were, why they're increasing, decreasing. One that supported the kinds of economies of scale that makes the JPA feasible, but one that also achieves equitable services and equitable charging, so that cities didn't feel like they were subsidizing other cities, but nonetheless that you were still able to achieve those economies of scale that makes the JPA advantageous. But also giving cities the ability to shape what their core services are, so things like patrol, traffic, et cetera. And the one we came up with, it divides costs into three baskets, or three charging methods, one of which would be the shared services, the other being the kind of regional, electively sought services, things like traffic, participation in violent offenders, gangs, task force, things like that. And local, these would be services that cities are directly selecting, how many patrol officers they would like on the street, crime prevention officers, SROs, things like that. But first, of course, the biggest cost of any police agency is going to be personnel. And so, at the core of this analysis was determining how much this would actually cost. And the way that we did that was by doing a detailed compensation survey of nine different agencies, or cities, rather, and researching every detail as far as what the compensation plans were, ranges for compensation, incentive-based pay, calpers or non-calpers plans, details like that, where new, where sworn hiring centers offered, really everything that goes into the whole compensation package. And from that research, we were able to develop a model of what a potential JPA compensation package would look like using today's dollars. And in doing so, we, of course, had to set priorities as far as, we wanted this to be something that would be attractive to someone on the job market, that they would want to join this agency, so we had high, very competitive pay levels. But we also wanted it to be something that was responsible and resistant to pension cost variability looking forward into the future. And so, the plan that we came up with, very high incentive-based pay, very high regular pay, a defined benefit plan for sworn personnel, and we looked at calpers as the one in the report for that system, for civilian employees. We looked at offering a defined contribution system instead. But given that the JPA would be starting in 2021, you'd need to hire hundreds of new sworn positions. So, to be able to make that feasible, we introduced a new hire bonus for sworn recruits. And so, then, once we had the compensation, so the total cost of hiring each position, from police captains to administrative assistants to everything that goes into the organization, we looked at how many of the positions we would actually need. And we need to do that both now, so that we had the comparison versus RST to build a, to gauge the cost of services, but also 2021, when the JPA would actually be formed. So, we looked at core services, patrol investigative dispatch services, things that kind of scale to service demands, did that staffing analysis. We looked at support positions, how they need to be supported, specialized services, and basing that off of what cities are receiving now, what they're contracting for now. Certainly, probably the most important thing about the JPA feasibility analysis was that all services that are currently being received had to be duplicated at least the same level that they're being received contracted for today. And so, in doing that, we projected staffing needs for 2021 based on anticipated population growth, and how that affects culture service, and separately, how that affects crime, based on current per capita levels relative to each city. And from 2016 to 2021, initial 38 positions would be needed. So, certainly, different kinds of positions. It wasn't a level scaling as far as investigations would be scaling, same with patrol. It was based off of what those specific service demands would be anticipated to be. And so, then startup costs, to be able to start a new agency, you need to build a number of facilities. You need to have 911 communications infrastructure, fleet, hundreds of different... You'd need, that'd have 911 communications infrastructure, fleet, hundreds of different, not just police interceptive vehicles, but other types, equipment, information technology, sworn hiring incentives. So, we conducted research on how much all of that would cost. And in total, that would be about 66.1 million in startup incentives. And one note on the facilities part of that, we, there were a number of potential opportunities to use existing facilities that are currently being leased out to RST, but for the purposes of this analysis, it was just only things that were purely under the control of JPA, of just how much this would, how much it would cost to start the agency from scratch. And so, in total, 66 million. If you amortize that under a 10-year fixed bond, interest rate of 5%, it would be about 84.3 million, with an average debt service of 8.4 million per year on average.
So, the result of this analysis of cost, and again, this is based on the cost analysis as Ian just described it, as well as the cost allocation methodology that he described, comes up with a table that you see here below, where it shows that for the nine cities overall, there are, is the potential to reduce costs by about $14 million or a year, or about 10%. So, we didn't try to reach an objective where all the cities had cost savings. We wanted to have a neutral analysis based on a reasonable cost allocation methodology of the cost that we described. Of course, if you went down this road, and hopefully you do, because there's some substantial opportunity here, there are opportunities to do a number of things. Because there are three agencies where, using this methodology, where costs are projected to increase: Coachella, Menifee, and Wildamar. All the rest of the cities, six other cities, have substantially greater costs and look great savings compared to current cost, including Temecula of about $4 million a year, or 16% less than current, than current Sheriff's Department costs. So, again, that's 10% JPA cost savings overall, or about $14 million a year. Coachella, Menifee, and Wildamar are the exceptions, and Coachella largely because of its isolation, Wildamar because they made some conscious decisions to reduce costs, and we've assumed a cost structure against their expected cost based on their workload. And Menifee, for some of the same reasons, although we understand that they have just entered into, are entering in an agreement to expand Sheriff's Department service cost by about $3 million a year. So, there are going to be some changes here. And clearly, to the extent that Sheriff's Department cost trends are higher than recent trends, then that delta, that difference between JPA costs and Sheriff's Department costs can grow. However, for most of the other cities, certainly the larger ones, cost reductions of 16% to 20% are possible. So, the other conclusions are that, just remember that the services that we're basing this on and the service levels are largely identical in several instances, there are improvements in service levels on the existing. And there are many qualitative differences and advantages to this, sharing decisions with eight other communities rather than 16 other communities plus the unincorporated area. So, there's a greater level of control, although that is shared in a JPA kind of environment. So, why is it different? Clearly, the retirement system assumptions are a major part of it. It would be a new agency, so the tier-two retirement system, also known as PEPRA, would, has a lot to do with the cost savings here. So, we've made assumptions that most of the senior staff would be in the legacy system, while most of the new staff would be in the new second-tier system. Other differences in the pension systems relate to, you don't have an unfunded pension system. You're starting from scratch. Civilians are on a defined contribution plan rather than a defined benefit plan. You have, in this kind of organization, even though we've assumed comparable service levels, more control over specialization that can result in greater costs. And it retains many of the advantages of the current Sheriff's Department contract, including the share of local services versus regionalized services, versus system-wide services, as well as some innovative approaches that they currently use, like uses civilians in the field. So, what are some alternatives here? Clearly, as you look at yourselves and the other eight communities, that all of you may not participate if you go further. If Coachella opts out, it has very little effect because of their isolation. In fact, it improves the cost effectiveness by a marginal amount to the other agencies. If one or two of the small to medium-sized agencies didn't participate, it would have a marginal cost impact. Clearly, the two big players, yourselves and Moreno Valley, would have a big impact on the cost effectiveness of this, just because of size. So, because the economies of scales are reduced. You could get other cities interested in this, and we are aware of other cities that did not participate in this effort, are currently interested in this kind of idea, particularly agencies that are around Coachella and NDO and anywhere else, and those, in Pulse Springs, those agencies are starting to have some interest, which makes the equation relating to Coachella quite a bit different. So, we think that there's both service advantages and cost advantages to considering this. So, right now, the next steps for you and the other eight cities are to evaluate this, evaluate what your next steps are, and to come to some level to commit or not. But there is a basis for this being feasible. So, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. So, are there any questions? This is receiving file, but I think we can go ahead and ask the questions if you want.
Just have a quick one. Just a quick one. In our current contract with sheriff, Versailles County Sheriff, there are certain services that they perform that are not built into the rate: helicopters, SWAT, I believe, and maybe a couple of others. Yeah. Has that been figured into your analysis, so that we're truly comparing apples and apples in terms of rates?
The, those services which the Sheriff's Department provides to the unincorporated area and to contract the non-contract cities without cost remain the same. So, you don't pay for those services now, Hemet doesn't pay for them when they receive them now, and you wouldn't pay for them in a JPA environment either. Now, if they changed that assumption, they'd have to change it for everybody.
I don't think the Sheriff's Department would be terribly happy with us, and I would suspect they would not make those services available, but who knows? And that remains to be seen.
But again, they would have to do that equally.
Matt, you had a question?
I have lots, but, you know, I'm wondering, this may not be the appropriate forum for that, and I'm wondering maybe from a standpoint with city manager, are we putting this toward a, maybe a subcommittee to have a discussion on, or will we bring this forward in a different meeting to dig into it more?
I mean, this was, this was under Presentations Proclamations, but I think it'd be good if you want to get your questions out there, and we can, we can follow up offline or tonight, but this was meant to sort of daylight the draft study to us, and they're, they're doing this presentation to the other nine cities that contracted for the study too, so.
And if, and if we have questions later, we can always email.
Absolutely. This doesn't have to be the, the end of this discussion this evening.
Go ahead, go ahead and ask.
I have a list of 12 items. Just, let me, just a handful of things. One is compensation structure that you're talking about. I have some concerns about recruitment and retention, given that it's a substantial shift from the model that I think a lot of the other agencies are using here. Any thoughts on that?
Well, we believe we've got a very attractive compensation structure as an assumption in here. The list of agencies that Ian mentioned, we've chosen a point about two-thirds up that scale. So, you're not midpoint, you're not, we've not lowballed our assumptions about compensation, you're two-thirds up. So, I think that's attractive. If a new employee comes to any, just about any law enforcement agency in California today, they're going to be tier-two. That's what's going to happen on the retirement system side. So, that plus the $10,000 recruitment signing bonus, I think that's very attractive. Some agencies are using that as a strategy now, typically not at that level. I think that's very attractive, and this would be a large law enforcement agency. This would be one of the largest law enforcement agencies in the state of California. As a result, you would have a great attractive power to bring people in the organization in terms of diversity of assignments, work environments, promotion, special assignments, promotability in a new organization. I think you'd have a lot to offer.
Okay. So, that highlighted is one of my concerns about some of the assumptions used in your modeling effort, given that some of the assumptions, I'm not confident maybe necessarily match well with every city in the analysis, and in particular, Temecula. If those are used to inform the analysis, and then those conclusions that you had are sort of based on those assumptions in that analysis, then I have concerns about the conclusions as well. And in particular, I think there's, this is moving us towards sort of a fundamental change in the way that we, we do business as far as public safety is concerned. And, and one of the things that I think needs to also be addressed in this discussion is questions regarding the JPA versus individual city liability and risk exposure, creating this model versus what we have currently.
Right. Well, the JPA, you'd have the ability to separate that liability to the JPA. Clearly, the nine cities would participate in that. You'd have a pool, you'd participate in the various risk pools for workers' comp, for general liability, other types of things with other public entities. That needn't change.
Okay. The, you know, and this is more of a conversation, I think, among our colleagues here too, is, I'm not confident that the same environment exists today that existed two years ago that sort of prompted this whole analysis and conversation in the first place, and in particular, both at the city level and, and more importantly, today at the county level too. And so, you know, you're always going to be moving the goalpost out on, you know, any sort of analysis like this, but, you know, that's probably an internal dialogue that we have. And I know, Jeff, you were really instrumental in, you know, the initial stages of all of this, and I'm not confident we're in the same place that we were back then.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, can I just address that for a minute? Yeah, you're right, Matt. And going back, I think it's probably okay to talk about it now, but our thought process, my thoughts at the time that we talked about, talking to the other cities about this kind of analysis, was really for the purpose of leverage. In looking at, we had the sheriff's contracts coming up, and we didn't have a seat at the table, still don't. And so, how can we create some leverage in those discussions? Understanding that the contract cities represent about 60% or more, I think now, of the sheriff's business and revenue, the threat of removal could make sense only if the analysis made sense, otherwise we wouldn't have any leverage at all. So, so that really was kind of the thought, at least in my mind. It wasn't so much that we wanted to move, no offense to your analysis, but, I mean, we're happy with the service. We're not so happy with the contract sometimes, and the fact that we don't always get what we want in terms of transparency and the like. Another thing that's going on, and I, I don't know where it sits today, I think they, they made some resolution at the county, but the whole analysis, efficiency analyses that they're doing is producing some significant positive results. And it may very well be that we'll see some relief of those contracts amounts. We may not. They may come back and look and say, you know, these services you're not paying for. Well, this rate's going to be lower here, but you're going to pay for this over here. But, but I, I think we're in a better pla, I mean, I agree with you, it's the bottom line, and we're in a better place now than we were.
So, so do you think that, you know, what I'm seeing coming out of this report is maybe helping with potential talking points and, and sort of a conversation with Riverside Sheriff and the county that's a deeper level now that we have a little bit more information? You know, there's some things out of here that certainly could be discussed with those folks, and maybe we continue that dialogue. Because you're absolutely right, I think we're very happy with the service that we're, we're receiving and the, the quality of public safety that we have in the city. And so, I'd like to make sure that, you know, part of what we're doing here tonight maybe helps to inform that process moving forward.
Yeah, I agree. Stu, anything? Good. Aaron?
Madam Mayor, just, just a point of clarification, because Councilmember Ron, you're exactly right, the landscape has changed since we first embarked on this study, and I think Mr. Brady can confirm this, but this, this started from a place of unsustainable costs that we could not afford, and that's where the conversation started. And, and it was unsustainable, and cities and contract cities were concerned. And so, we entered into this, and, and the numbers that are modeled for Temecula don't represent today's picture. So, it's important for me to go on the record and say that, so it's not entirely today's landscape. So, what's happened in the last 18, 24 months? Well, we basically made adjustments in our budget. We, the voters of our community approved a special sales tax measure, which allowed us to add 11 officers in January of this year. So, our staffing levels have, have adjusted since January. We've, we backfilled, we unfund, or unfunded in positions that we couldn't afford. So, so we're, we're at 111 sworn officers now with all the CSOs. So, we had the ability, that was a commitment we made to our community if passed, and so, I say all that to say that our police staffing levels are very much different than the other eight cities that are modeled here, because we could, and because our voters approved measure us. And so, that's, that's one of the more radical differences being, based on what's modeled here too. Mr. Brady, would you?
Well, sure. Well, first of all, to the extent that any agency adds cost, and to the extent that the unit cost in terms of the employees is different in the JPA versus the Sheriff's Department model, that difference increases with all of that. So, you know, I, building off of what these two council members said, that sure, a study like this can fulfill a lot of objectives. Certainly, it can be leverage, especially because of the magnitude of the potential cost savings with a level playing field and the service capability. But we had, you had, nobody had any idea what the outcome of this was going to be. If I was, I probably wouldn't be standing here if it cost more. I probably wouldn't be standing here if it saved 1% or 2% compared to current cost. This is food for thought here for some consideration of follow-up, at the same time that you're using it as due diligence with the sheriff.
Yeah. Agreed. Anything else?
So, what does that follow-up look like for, for us then? Are we anticipating a subcommittee, or would you like to?
You know, my recommendation is that I be allowed to continue this discussion with my peers that are involved in the study at the city manager level. I think we have some ideas, we have some, now that the, the study's out, there are some things that, that we'd like to discuss at our level and potentially have further review or have further discussion with the city council. I'm also very interested in the KPMG study that'll come out in the fall. I expect that in September, and what, you know, those operational efficiencies look like. And I think we take all that into consideration in terms of what it means, because we are interested in cost savings, and, and this is our biggest line item in our expenditure budget and probably always will be. So, so we're, we don't want to just shelve this thing, but I think this is, this was a good start in data for us to continue. So, I, I'm happy to bring information back over the next few months as we continue to discuss it with the region.
I, I think it'd be appropriate if we kind of receive regular updates about what's being discussed and if any conclusions are drawn, or if there are any options, and then at, at some point, we may want to establish a subcommittee to, once we have a framework to consider that comes from the TAC, because we have to remember, we're not in this alone, you know, we're negotiating with all the other cities who are like-minded and want to reduce costs. So, thank you for your presentation, and then we'll take it from here.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So, now we can go down to city council reports. And anybody?
Madam Mayor, we do have several public comments.
Oh, okay. So, I'll go ahead and read then, in that case. What can we take? We'll take city council reports first, and then we'll go to city, to, to city business? I mean, I'm backtracking because we didn't have council reports at the beginning, because I moved the consent calendar up.
I think we'd recommend public comments first and then...
These are generalized public comments.
Oh, general, okay. All right, then. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Okay.
The first speaker is Bob Knapp, to be followed by Janice Knapp.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Bob Knapp. My wife and I have been resident and homeowner here in Temecula for 21 years. Recently, my next-door neighbor sold his home, and the buyer was an investor that lives in San Diego County. He has since turned it into a short-term vacation rental home. Since then, there have been a lot of problems with excessive noise after 10:00 p.m. We've called law enforcement when this happens, but it's happening frequently. This rental's listed on vacation home rental sites like Airbnb and HomeAway. The listing encourages groups of up to 18 people to sleep over while they're renting, and it's listed for overnight parties. The operator of the home has added amenities such as outdoor sound systems and games in the garage. So far, the home has been booked for several weeks in advance, so every two or three days, a new group comes in and wants to have a party. As homeowners, we don't want to live the rest of our lives having to call law enforcement late at night. This offending property and our home are both in Zone LM. In my opinion, this home is operating as a commercial motel in a residential zone. To describe it in any other way is disingenuous and wrong. The business activity in my neighborhood should be deemed illegal by the city. Problems associated with these short-term rentals, I call them STRs, have been well documented in other tourist cities. These problems include a decline in neighborhood conditions, rising crime rates, loss of community, and declining home values due to stigmatization. I mean, I don't know who would buy my home now, honestly. STRs are growing in popularity because investors are making a lot of money off of them, and the lodgers enjoy cheap rates, but their benefits are generated at the expense of neighboring homeowners. Other tourist cities like Anaheim, Laguna Beach, and Palm Springs have had STR ordinances for several years now. Some of these cities have completely prohibited STRs in residential zones with good results for the homeowners. Temecula, however, has been strangely ambivalent on this. No regulations, no prohibitions. Our code doesn't mention STRs. I understand that the city is working on this, but they're a bit behind the curve, and I'm asking them to get on top of the curve and amend the code to prohibit these STRs in our residential zones. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Janice Knapp, to be followed by June Early.
I just want to thank the council members. I think you've all seen my emails, so I want to put a face. Look, I've done, I think you may have replied, but I want to put a face with the emails to show that it's not just me getting on an email, going on a rant. To follow up on my husband, and I think, Luke, maybe you got it, the initial listing on Airbnb listed 14 beds. You could have events up to 20 people, more than 20 between 20 and 40. For $500 deposit, you could have a special event. I think your department took care of that because it now says that city events or special events are prohibited, but the intent was clearly there. And I think as a person, it's most upsetting because when they bought the property, do you think they would have come over to us and said, you know, by the way, we're doing a short-term rental? If there's a problem, if there's an issue, can you call us? We finally got the deed, we know who the owners are, we just don't know how to call them. I complained, I think you mentioned a complaint to Airbnb neighbors. I finally got a response, and the response was, "We really encourage you to work it out with the host's family." Thank you! How do I reach them? I have no idea. But the reality is, both me and my husband work. I mean, we used to sleep with our windows open because, you know, we live in a great city, it cools off at night. We can't anymore. There's talking, there's music, it goes on till 11, 12 at night. But like I said, it was advertised as a special event. I was shocked. You know, it's, and then I got onto Facebook this weekend, I'm sorry, I, Temecula Exchange, found out there's four other homes owned by, three other homes owned by this party doing exactly the same things. They put up with wedding receptions, everything else, and they are also located in the city of Temecula, and I believe one of the wives have reached out to you on that. So trying to put a face with it, it is important. We were planning, my last daughter is through college in May, downsize the home. We don't need a five-bedroom home with a pool. But now we have to disclose, oh, by the way, there's a short-time Airbnb next to us when we sell it, right? Legally? Who's going to buy it? So anyways, anything you can do, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is June Early, to be followed by Mark Shabel.
June, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I wanted to come by today to share a little bit about SAFE Alternatives for Everyone. For those that don't know, our agency is a nonprofit, and we work with families impacted by domestic violence. This past May, we celebrated our 15th anniversary for Denim and Diamonds, and our tagline, which we enjoy having a lot of fun because of the work that we do is pretty hard and working with families. So our tagline was, "Party Like You Want to Make a Difference." And we made a difference. Our community made a difference on May the 20th. Our goal was to raise $100,000, and we raised just a little bit over $130,000. And those funds go to support our families. Not only did we recognize and have a great time at that event, we also recognized some of our old founders, not our old founders, but our original founders and some of our founding board members for SAFE Alternatives for Everyone. And today, I wanted to provide a brief, a little presentation to Mayor Mary Ann Edwards. She was actually one of our founding board members in 1999 for SAFE Alternatives for Everyone. And you would have been really proud for the, about the funds that we raised, because the Monday after that event, we actually had, we placed a family at our Trinity Safe House, and it was a family that lives in our community. She's a medical professional, and she's, and she has a family of four. And they are still at our Trinity Safe House, which is an undisclosed location, and she was actually able to find permanent housing and will be moving out in September. But those funds actually went to raise resources for our community and also our families impacted by domestic violence. And just to give you an idea of some of the things that we talked about, we did something a little different. As opposed to saying we want to raise money, we talked about some of the tangible things that some of our clients need on a daily basis. So we talked about $100 will fund a night at a hotel. $73 will help with the gas bills. $51 might fund an oil change, car registration, $169. So we put the things that we all use and we work with daily, these are some of the same things that our clients need on a daily basis. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what we were able to do this May, and this is your T-shirt that says, "Party Like You Want to Make a Difference," Denim and Diamonds 2016. And this is, thank you, on behalf of our clients that we serve in our community. Thank you.
Aw, thank you, June. You know, when they talk about each of those individual items and what they can purchase, just imagine in your mind a woman fleeing a home at 2:00 in the morning with four small children and no place to go, and sometimes that is the only way that they can get out of the house.
Absolutely.
And they can run straight to SAFE Alternatives and find support and shelter and clothing and just, you know, gas and oil changes and everything that they need that, because they're now a single-parent household with nothing.
Yes.
So thank you for everything that SAFE does. It's been wonderful to be associated all these years and just, you know, being an advisor. I'm so proud of what SAFE has become, and I think it was, you know, Carol's dream and thanks to the lady who originally sold her home and left it as a legacy to SAFE Alternatives.
Elvis Salisbury.
Yes. Yeah, so thank you, June.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I just bring this up?
Yes, thank you. Thanks so much. And tell the board, thank you very much for their continued work and support.
And the last speaker is Mark Shabel. Hi, Mark.
Hello. For the record, my name is Mark Shabel. I'd like to introduce, well, before, let me, let's go through priorities first. Of course, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, and support staff for, to make this city. I greatly appreciate your efforts. And secondly, thank you for your time. My name is Mark Shabel, pronounced like water table. Thank you for getting it right, I greatly appreciate that. I am here to introduce myself and announce that I'm running for, as a candidate for the Rancho Water District Water Board. The position is neither Democratic nor Republican, but everybody needs water regardless of party. And I look forward to working with you and for all of you in the future. I will fight the regulations and bureaucracy that impede small businesses. New wineries are taking up to seven years to be built. This is unacceptable. This costs them dearly, deprives them of needed tax revenue and much-needed jobs. Everybody loses. I will fight to expedite the process and work with these new wineries to conserve water and at the same time improve wine quality. As a winemaker consultant, I have done this in the past, and I know how to do this. These wineries will create new jobs, not only in their construction, but long-lasting jobs as they get up and running. Wineries bring tourists, tourists bring money. Our citizens have risen to the occasion by cutting back on water during the drought. The state has declared the drought is over, yet Rancho Water has yet to reinstate Tier 3. It isn't simply the measure of 10 cents for a bag at a grocery store. They have raised, they have eliminated Tier 3. This is a 340% jump from Tier 2 to Tier 4. Our recent winter has now created flood-like conditions, let me just a second here, okay, flood-like conditions, and our supplier is demanding $700 per acre foot, knowing that Rancho Water can only afford, at best, half of that. They'd rather send it to the ocean than come down in price. We must fight this. I will fight this. We need strong stewardship with regard to infrastructure. Vale Lake has an aging dam that requires rehabilitation, and the area needs restoration. We must maintain the quality of life for our campers, hikers, horseback riders, et cetera, and more importantly, must maintain the quality of life for the Temecula citizens simply driving down Temecula Parkway. Will this project bring truck after truck of gravel and sand down the Temecula Parkway? I will fight for a proper evaluation by the Army Corps of Engineers so that the superfluous amounts of gravel trucks are greatly reduced. Adding pitted windshields to our citizens is too much to pay. Once again, we are taxed enough.
I need you to summarize, Mark, please.
I'll wrap it up. Thank you for your time, and it's Mark Shabel, candidate for Rancho Water. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to city council reports, and Mayor Potem Ron is in the queue.
Good evening. A couple of quick things. I had seen a number of the emails, and fortunately, I was out of town, but I had seen a number of the emails that you had sent, and definitely read them all and understand the issue. In fact, it's interesting because the temporary home rental, whatever we want to term that, was something that I think I had worked with Mr. Butler on almost as soon as I was elected, because it's a concern. Now, at that time, staff's analysis and looking at what was going on in the city two and a half years ago or so said that there really wasn't much activity at all, and there's really no, you know, significant need for any, you know, major modifications of ordinances and all that. Since then, I think maybe there, you know, are some issues, and I completely understand where you're coming from on that, so we're definitely taking it seriously. I want everybody to, you know, understand that. Beyond just the, you know, sort of business license, TOT issues and all of that, you know, one of the things I was thinking while I was listening is, I'm kind of curious how the Realtor Association stands on this issue, and whether we might be able to get them, if they do have an analysis or a report, for us to be able to understand how this potentially impacts property values. Is this an item that should be disclosed now to folks that are interested in buying a property? You know, you brought up some very cogent points, and so, you know, it'd be, it'd be a great idea if we could reach out to them maybe and see what they're, if they have a position on this, and if they don't, maybe we can start a conversation with them about forming one. Otherwise, thank you very much, because we certainly don't want this to spread like wildfire through our communities. And speaking of wildfire, so fascinating segue there, I've been spending a considerable amount of time with our friends at CAL FIRE and the U.S. Forest Service, and it's been a tremendous season so far, and correct me if I'm wrong there, but I think we're close to 900 more starts this year for fires in the state of California than in prior years. So it's been, it's been an absolutely astonishing year, and it's not even, you know, halfway over as far as the, you know, major part of the fire season's concerned. Tell your folks to stay safe, and we appreciate all the work they do in protecting our communities. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, Stu, your name was up there and it disappeared.
Yes.
Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I do have a flyer that I want to present to the people who are out there. We have been getting some complaints about the homeless situation, especially along the Temecula Creek area on the south end of town, and I just want everybody to know that we are doing something about this. I mean, we, we have four full-time police officers. That's all they do, is they deal with the homeless situation. We have two full-time staff people. That's all they do, is deal with the homeless situation, and we're trying to figure out ways to mitigate it, but we are hampered by the law, and the laws say it's not illegal to be homeless. And so, but one of the main reasons why we have so many homeless is exactly what this flyer is trying to get everybody to stop doing, and that's giving money to these people, because you are not helping them. That money does not go for food. They can go to any of the food pantries in town and get all the food they want. They're never going to go hungry in Temecula. So, in fact, Mary Ann came up with the responsible compassion that we exercise here. So there's, these people are not going hungry, but they're, that money goes straight for a drug addiction. So we want to encourage people to say no to these people, and when you do say no, it encourages them to move on, because they're looking for places that they can go to get their money for their drugs. And the citizens of Temecula are very, very generous people, and I know people who give out $20 bills to these people, and it makes them feel good, and it doesn't do anything but destroys the person they're giving that money to. So please, if you want to give money, give money to multiple charities out there that are, that's all they do is deal with homeless. There's a lot of faith-based organizations out there that spend a lot of time and a lot of money trying to put these people in a better place, and the ones that want to, there's plenty of opportunities to get there, and the ones that don't, those are the ones that are standing out in front of 7-Eleven or, you know, whatever drugstore you're walking into or whatever. Please, please, don't give them money, because that's what causes them to create their encampments over there in the creek bed, because they live here just like we live here, because it's a nice place to live. Even though they're living in a creek bed, they're living in a creek bed in Temecula. So they actually enjoy our quality of life just on a different level. So, but we need to make sure that they're not financially getting the monies that they need to support their habits, you know. And everybody will tell you who's dealing with these type of people, is they got to hit rock bottom, and by giving them money, you're not helping them hit rock bottom. Believe it or not, living in a creek bed is not rock bottom. So you need to, please, please, don't give them money. So we do have these flyers available to merchants, you know, if anybody wants one of these to put in their store, especially if they have panhandlers out front, please email me, call me, whatever, and I will make sure you get these flyers. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Stu. That was excellent. Okay, so now we're going to skip over the consent calendar, which we handled already, and I am going to recess the city council meeting and move on to the Temecula Community Services meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, let's take the roll since we're not all here.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Negara is absent. Director Ron?
I am here, still.
Director Stewart?
Here.
And President Comaturo?
Here. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, we'll skip that then. We have only one item under the consent calendar. We have only one item under the consent calendar, item 13, to consider approval of the action minutes of July-
Move approval.
-11th. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion carries 4-0 with Mr. Nigara absent. Mr. Hawkins, what have you got for us tonight?
Mr. President, as Michael would say since his trip to Ireland, everything is lovely and nothing to add this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, any board member reports?
No.
Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to August 8th.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objection? Stand adjourned.
Thank you. So, calling this meeting back to order as the Temecula Public Financing Authority, so we can go straight, well, can we go ahead and have the roll call since Mr. Councilman Nigara's not here?
Director Comitero?
Here.
Director Nigara is absent. Director Ron?
Yep, I'm still here.
Director Stewart?
Here.
And Chairperson Edwards.
I am also still here. Okay, and do we have any public comments? We do not. All right, then. We can also move on to the consent calendar. Authorized, number 14, authorized fiscal year 2017-18 special tax levies for the community facilities districts. And, do we have a report, please?
This item's on consent.
Oh, it's on consent, huh? I'm all mixed tonight.
Move items 14.1 through 14.6.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And, there it is. All right. And that is four, with Councilmember Nigara absent. Do we have anything from Executive Director, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, and no Board of Directors' reports for TPA. Okay, then I'll accept a motion for adjournment to August 8th.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is approved, four, with Councilmember Nigara absent. So now, all we have is the reconvening of the Temecula City Council meeting, and we have any departmental reports, those are receive and file. And so, any Board of Commission reports? Board members, anything first?
Yeah, one quick item, Madam Mayor. Basically, just a quick community call to action. I have a slide. The Margarita Recreation Center is going through a, a needs assessment. So we have a community workshop on August 5th. It's a Saturday morning from 9:00 until noon. Just really want the community to know that this is available, something you can come out and help shape the future of, of not only this facility, but this, this part of town, this region in town. And like I said, there's going to be food available, there'll be breakfast served and, and games for the kids, so bring your family out and, and help shape Temecula's future.
And to clarify, even though we don't really say this anymore, it is the former YMCA facility, so it's going to be a huge positive impact to that part of the, of the city.
Most definitely.
So we'd love to have lots of people come out and help us-
Back the house.
...plan activities, yes. So, anything else, Zach?
That's all. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tellese, oh, anything?
Oh, yes, we met last week and discussed a few items. One, I think of interest to most people in the city who buy gas and typically buy gas at the cheapest prices they can get. Costco being one of those on top. If you're ever going, at Costco trying to buy gas on a Friday afternoon, you know what, what the lines look like. They've come up with a new concept for traffic circulation and added some pumps, especially diesel. I'm not sure why the diesel took, took so much of the project, but there are separate vent, vents, I'm sorry, separate pumps for the diesel, and they're also adding them to each of the regular pumps now, so there's three different things you can get out of those pumps. But the circulation element is the one they think is going to please the most people if you're ever in that area and want to get in there quick and get out. It should be easier in a bit.
Well, thank you. Yes, that's going to be a, a welcome modification. And Mayor Potem Ron has a question.
Mr. Tellese, oh, thanks. Just a quick question on that. I was reading some of the reports from there. The, my understanding is the diesel pumps are added to existing pumps, they're not adding more pumps to the station, is that correct?
They're adding more pumps, and they're adding diesel to the-
And they're adding diesel to that. Does the, and I, and I know right now they only have like one or two pumps that currently provide diesel.
That's the problem. Now every pump will be-
Every pump will. And is that going to help with the traffic issue? Is that part of the analysis then?
So, I think that's one of the reasons it's jammed up around, around the diesel pumps and exiting.
Right.
And even with the additional pumps, the traffic study said it's still a-
I would hope.
-net reduction, or where are we at with that?
One, one of the reasons is because you have more pumps, so the lines at each pump will be shorter. And the problem was, the long line was blocking the circulation of the other traffic, so I think that was part of it.
So there's going to be no, nothing's going to change as far as how you get in and out of Costco? Is that, or is something going to change?
Luke's dying to get in here, too.
So, the, the, the entrance to Costco that comes off the ring road for the mall-
Right.
-will be moved to the east. First things first, that creates a longer queuing distance from the intersection. Additionally, there will be a dedicated gasoline lane when you turn in, which will take you directly to the gas. There will be, and, there will be another lane that is dedicated that takes people who don't want to go to the gas station straight into Costco. The addition of the, of the diesel on all of the gas pumps is going to be a huge benefit because the diesel was at the first pump as you entered. So all of the larger vehicles that take diesel were waiting for that first pump, which backed everyone else up, which meant that you had the gasoline pumps not even being used while there was this long queue. So adding those all to, uh, the existing and the additional pumps will be a huge benefit to keeping cars moving through there.
So where were they moving the entrance to? I mean, I, I'm, I'm trying to visualize. So it's moving to the east, so it's moving towards that other road that comes from Overland, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So are, are they going to create another entrance in? Is that, is that it?
Right, so the, the whole entrance will be moved down. So where, the entrance that's there now will be closed off, and a-
Okay.
-brand-new entrance will be, uh, constructed just east of that-
Okay.
-about 40 feet.
Okay, cool. All right, good.
We good? So Jeff?
Either for John or Luke, was there any discussion or concern about the fact that with so many additional diesel pumps, that there'll be so many additional large vehicles that will take up the capacity that they're creating?
Yeah, there was no discussion of that. I think that's, they're actually hoping that that will happen, and, and that's why they've added the, the, the additional lane to, to get people to come directly in. One of the other benefits of this, of this is that they're actually going to end up with, I believe, 19 more parking spaces than they had. I believe that was the number, that's somewhere around there than they did previously. So they're, they are actually adding some more parking to the, to that squeezed parking lot.
Are you and the commission confident that the net result will be better and not worse with the addition of so many more large vehicles if that is indeed what happens?
Well, I'm, I'm-
Passing can be taken off a cliff.
-I'm confident that what they've done is an improvement. Now, will it, it will increase, increase demand, you know, I don't know how you can possibly increase demand there, it's, it's jammed up all the time. But what they've done is, is certainly an improvement over what exists now.
I guess time will tell. I suspect Costco's coffers will be enriched, but hopefully there'll be more road capacity as well. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Hagel, how are you?
Good. I have, oop, wrong thing. Good. I have nothing new to report tonight, although I will take a poster to hang in my store, and if it hasn't been brought up, I suggest that we get some of those posters over the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, who can spread them out pretty quickly, so.
Right. That's great. Okay, so, City Manager, you have 30 minutes.
30-minute City Manager Report. Actually, I'll be very brief. I just have a couple of, couple of things. The I-15 Temecula Parkway interchange construction will have temporary lane or ramp closures at night this week and next week with staggering times from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So check the website or call the hotline for the specific details. They're listed there on the slide. Also, you probably have received this, if you're a resident, the city's newsletter, but a lot of infrastructure projects, road pavement, all of our investment with the Measure S funds is there. This is on the city's website. If you did not get that or you are interested in learning more, you can get all that there. And then lastly, Mr. Hagel, it's good to see you. Welcome back. We're, we're happy to have you here at the council meeting and joining, joining the city team again. And I'd like to recognize the very humble man standing back there in the corner, and he's been recently promoted to Chief Deputy and has served the city of Temecula as the chief of police for four years. I know we'll be talking about him more in a couple of weeks, and we'll say a lot more things about Chief Kubel, but I'd just like to recognize him tonight and the job that he's done, serving the city of Temecula. It's been nothing short of phenomenal.
It has, I agree. Would you like to come down and say a few things? He always says, "No." Come on down, come on.
He didn't want me to do that.
He didn't want you to do that, no.
Yelled him on it.
But you, you're part of the family, so.
Yeah. The introvert in me was back there saying, "No!"
No, I know.
Um, no, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. It's very bittersweet. Temecula's been my home since '94. Temecula will always be my city. I love Temecula. And it's leaving a job that I love for a job that's challenging and new things to learn, which is always very good, keep things fresh, and I'll always be a part of Temecula, and it's my favorite place. So, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity for the last four years.
Well, thank you, and we want it to continue to be your favorite place. And you know what I always say when family members are promoted, promoted and move up and out? Just one more step towards total world domination. So, thank you for everything you've done, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, gentlemen, if you'll indulge me for just a minute before I ask for an adjournment-
Wait.
I have, okay, but you can, let me do this really quick or I'll forget again, since we kind of went out of order this evening. I was approached by a local nonprofit, and they want to present or to implement a thing in Temecula, and it's called Giving Tuesday. And it's a tradition in other places and across the country, and it's where they enlist the help of volunteers to do community projects and things like that. And I thought it sounded like something the city would be interested in helping with, and so I offered to host their original planning meeting, which will be sometime, you know, in the early fall, because Giving Tuesday takes place in November. And so I just kind of wanted to let the council know and just get a general consensus that we would be sponsoring the use of, of one of our conference rooms or the conference center, and I will be participating as the host for the planning session for Giving Tuesday. And as that event comes to fruition, I'll be bringing it back to let you know so that you can all participate. Okay? So now, City Attorney. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tonight in closed session, the city council authorized the city attorney's office to serve the lawsuit against Nature Works, Inc., and to defend the three claims related to that lawsuit. And there's no other actions to report from closed session.
Okay.
And that vote was five to zero.
Thank you, Peter. And Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Comitero?
And not this year.
Not this year.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we get ready to adjourn, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Sarah Nigara, Mike